Hi, Pat.
Hi, John.
Hi, Ethan. Hi, Jeremy and Shelly.
Hi.
Hello, everybody.
Actually, you can come up here and just stop.
Okay.
Right there at the end.
Where was it at that at YouTube? Okay, we're live on YouTube, just to let you know.
Watch your tongue. And then there's the end of the meeting. Right there.
Oh, yeah, I got it. There's still.
And you have Matt Wolfe. Hey, Ethan, you got new planning board member Matt Wolfe is joining right now as well.
Okay.
See, okay, I'm gonna let him in.
Yeah, and then Steve Gold, you can let him in.
Is he the one?
Steve Gold is. Well, Chris out. Tell Chris, Audrey's not in on this today, Ethan, will you?
Helen?
Yeah, message him.
Okay, I've got a, I use my phone for my Zoom, but okay.
You can let both of those in as guests. Yep, and then that's the Gia. You probably have to monitor that participant list until.
Till we get everybody.
Till you get people in, because I assume, I assume there might be certain realtors maybe joining us.
And then I can hit that when it's finished.
Ethan, I love how you just spit on your side.
Well, I told you, you made me message on my phone, use my phone for the Zoom, and then I keep an eye on things on the.
There you go.
Hit the traffic. So, and then X, that one where you've got everybody in?
What's that?
Just hit that one, everybody's.
You can, but sometimes they, someone may show up later and you wouldn't.
Am I still sideways?
No, now you're better. No, you're sideways.
I'm sideways?
Yeah.
Weird.
Oh, now you're upright.
Okay, man, that would have been really fun. Next time I'll try for upside down.
Said AI.
Well, you will.
Yeah, good. Thank you so much.
I'll see you all later. Shelly, you got.
Bye.
Shelly tonight.
Okay.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Jenny, I locked this door.
All right, thanks so much.
I think we're still waiting for Crisso, is that right?
Is Crisso, let me see what he said. He sent us a message, didn't he?
I think he's trying to attend the Rockport Boat Club Board of Directors meeting.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, see, I messaged him that there's no Audrey today. He thought there was something else on the agenda before.
Right.
The STRs, but we can start without him and then you can jump in. He said it'll be a little late jumping on.
Cool.
That's fine.
All right, did everybody get the memo and everything and the agenda and all that? Okay.
Yeah.
I did, make sure I need to send it to you or not.
Indeed.
Everybody?
We got it twice, right, Shelly?
Uh, probably, maybe, yes.
Probably, maybe, yes.
Yes, that's a yes, definitely. Sorry about that.
No, not at all. Okay, I think I'm gonna go ahead and start this up. This is the Town of Camden Planning Board Workshop on STRs. We did have something on the agenda before the meeting for Audrey to come in and talk about parking, but that is not happening. So, first, I'd like to welcome new planning board member Matt Wolfe to the, to the team. Hi, Matt. Pleasure to meet you virtually and look forward to meeting you in person.
Hi, Matt.
I think you may be on mute.
He is.
Yes, I'm absolutely on mute. It would not be a Zoom meeting unless I started it on mute, so thank you.
That's right.
A pleasure to meet everyone. Thank you.
Great, glad to have you aboard. And Crisso said he'll be a little bit late, so. We'll just go ahead and get started and, and, and we'll have him join as many can. We do have some guests here as well. And we'll, we'll be providing opportunities for people to speak. I think Stephanie, you're from the Affordable Housing Trust, Midcoast Housing.
A Midcoast Regional Housing Trust, yes, and I'm a Camden resident. Yep.
Great, and Stephen, I know we've, we've had you before and we welcome you. And we expect we may have some other people jumping in as time goes by. So, to begin with, we do have a memo that Shelly sent around. I'm assuming you all got a chance to look at it. And I would say that the, you will probably noticed the, the biggest change is sort of in our definitions of categories, or at least a proposal for that. And so I guess I thought I'd like to just sort of jump right in there, since we've done a lot of the work. As far as, you know, the, the criteria and the reasons why, but I think that's the, the primary thing to look at. And so I wondered if you all might have thoughts on those definitions, or if there's another place you'd like to start.
Um, yeah, I did. I had some, Ethan.
Hey, Pat.
Um, okay, so the first one where we're talking about an accessory to a residential use. Um, wait, let me just find this. Oh, right, yeah, one of the thoughts that came to mind was how other towns have talked about keeping it as simple as we can. And given that, I was thinking that out of some of the options that you gave us, as long as the owner occupies the same lot and only one short-term rental per lot, and whether the owner of the lot is in the home or the ADU, I didn't think that would really matter. And no cap, I wasn't thinking on these types of rentals.
I agree with, I agree with Pat on both of those questions.
Good.
Oh, one thing that I wasn't, uh, didn't really get into are any of the fee structures. Although, Chia, you passed around some good information, so thanks for that. But I, yeah, I still didn't really look at the fee structure much.
Yeah, I think, I don't want to jump around too much, but I, I, I also support this, I, this idea of that one owner per lot and one STR per lot. I think that's a pretty, that is a good way to keep it simple. I do, I do voice concerns, and you know, I'm, I'm gonna be the hawk on this, that people building ADUs strictly to put them into STRs is not really what we're looking for and not following the purpose of what the state legislation was for allowing more density on lots and that sort of thing. And I wish the state had actually stepped in and been a little more, given a little more direction to towns. So, I do want to think about that. And one of the thoughts that I had in the conversation I had with Jeremy and with Shelly is that when we, when we changed the ADU regulation ordinance, Shelly, was that in 2019?
I think it was, yeah, before.
Yeah, I think, I think we changed it in 2019. I would be comfortable, and this is just something to think about, is I would be comfortable with saying anybody prior to that time who had an ADU on their lot would be eligible to, to, to put it into short-term rentals, as long as they continue to reside on one of the units, in one of the units. Where anybody after that time is already on notice, nobody's built an S, uh, uh, an ADU since 2019 without notice that they can't use it for short-term rentals, because technically right now under the ordinance, they are not eligible. So, I do, I do have that caveat to the, to the, to the information as, as you guys put it forth. And that would be my proposal. Because again, I think if we really think about all the legislation that came out, the work that the state did, they didn't directly address short-term rental, short-term rentals in a way that I think was helpful to the towns. But they, they definitely were doing it to create housing, not short-term rentals.
Right.
And, and so to follow the spirit of that legislation, I think it would behoove us to at least pay attention to that and consider that new units built after 2019 be, be considered still in the ineligible for, for short-term rentals. I'd be interested in your feedback on that.
That makes sense to me, Ethan.
I would agree. I mean, I think one of my, one of my concerns is if we don't cap it, then, you know, these ADUs, then they could proliferate, particularly if people start adding on solely for the purpose of renting them out short, short term. So, doing that kind of a, a, a cap, if you will, on it in those terms, I think that makes a lot of sense. There are, when I was doing my research, and I know, Pat, you ran across this as well, there are definitely some towns that just do not allow as short-term rentals. And that's how they get back some of the housing. But, but I think this kind of a cap on it, as Ethan suggests, would be helpful.
Yeah, I mean, that's the law in Canada, as we know, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, the cap is like just grandfathering, so to speak, anything built.
I think that's right.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's right. And that would be available in the town records.
Mm-hmm. It would be.
How do you feel about that, John? You look a little uneasy.
Um, yeah, I'm not quite there yet on it. I'd hang my hat on the concept that, you know, it's, it's a, what is the phrase? A owner-occupied situation, that if, you know, there's the Camden resident property owner who's in a main home or an ADU, whether that was there early or built more recently. I, I think I'd still be comfortable with that being a short-term rental, but, you know, I, I might distinguish between that and those absentee owner situations. But I, you know, I don't know, I think you're, you're getting an additional dwelling unit, and my hope might be that, you know, it might be an ADU one year and maybe not the next. You know, I apologize for missing the previous workshop, so I may be missing some shared concepts that you all have, but you know, I'm still supportive of tapping the overall number of non-owner-occupied units. And so you know, it's, if a unit hasn't been there before and it's a new one, then it's an additional dwelling unit to the overall housing stock. And if it's waylaid for short-term rentals for a while, maybe someday it wouldn't be. So, I'm, I'm not quite as adamant, but, but Ethan, I don't feel strongly on it. If it's the center of the board, I'll support it.
And it would still follow one per lot. So, if we, if we had the one short-term rental per lot, then it would be less of an, I guess, an impact you're, you're thinking.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, and, and I'll welcome the, the public. I think there's a raise hand feature on Zoom. Is that enabled?
Yes, there's a chat. Let me see what somebody wrote. Oh, that's, that's nothing we need to know. The AI bot. Oh, Stephen.
Okay.
Oh, wait, yeah, Stephen says, Stephen Gold, if an owner builds an adult and moves into that one for financial reasons, can they short-term the main house? So, I guess he's saying if, if the primary owner builds an ADU and moves into it and then runs out, then.
Yeah, that's, that's envisioned in what we've done. It, like, it, it, what we're saying, but I, I think that, that question would be, we're still debating a little bit about whether or not that would be for housing after 2019.
Right.
Hi, Stephanie.
Do you want my comments now?
Well, yeah, if, if you're, if you're speaking on ADUs specifically, that would be great.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm not speaking on behalf of the, I'm on the board of the Midcoast Regional Housing Trust. I'm speaking as Stephanie, citizen of Camden. Just so you know, because we've not taken a position on this as a board. But the data that, and you all have probably seen it, that almost a third of, of homes are being bought by out-of-state investors. I think whatever we can do in Camden to assure that properties do not have out-of-state investors putting short-term rentals is really vital. And we're having a, as you all know, a real crisis, even our teachers can't, I've already had inquiries to our housing trust, how do I get one of your units? And we haven't even built any yet. So, it's, it's quite dire.
Yeah.
Thank you, that's, that's helpful. And Stephen, did you feel like your answer, your question was answered?
I do not see the way.
Let me mute here. Yes, I see that my, my question was answered. Just a misspelling, I meant to say about an ADU. It sounds, I haven't resolved that yet about whether if someone builds an ADU tomorrow, if, if for financial reasons and downsizing, they move into the ADU, that they can short-term the larger house, which in fact may be about to be reassessed.
Right, yeah, and, and we, we, we are, we're still considering that issue, you're right. And we, we definitely recognize the benefit to a homeowner who does that for financial, financial reasons. One thing I would point out is that they're absolutely still, like, currently under the law, would still be free to rent that out into the long-term rental market. And, and thereby, you know, gain some, some benefit economically from that. And given the way the housing prices are right now for rentals, that's not a small sum.
That's true.
True.
Matt saw your hand up?
Yes, yeah, if you, if you don't mind. Let me take it down here. There we go. I, I think, since we, we have a moment here to just sort of lob in some higher level comments, and because I'm new, and because of what Stephanie said specifically, which was something that I was thinking about before I got on this call tonight. As a father, as a resident of Camden, as a father of a six-year-old and a two-year-old, I'm very acutely aware of like the teacher issue that you're speaking about. I'm also acutely aware of the development you're speaking about and how necessary that would be because of the lack of, of housing stock. And the lack of housing stock, not only for teachers, but for people that work in restaurants, or that, you know, families that want to move into Camden and be part of the community that cannot, because a lot of the housing stock is, is, is what we're talking about, right? Those specific pieces of housing stock that are really great houses in the neighborhood are being used for short-term rentals in a lot of cases. And so, you know, from my perspective, and what I'm here to, I think, you know, I don't have a lot of commentary here, it's to like the amount, or who can use what, because it's more of intent for me. So, as we're discussing, you know, if I move into one of my properties because I need to make some extra money, and, and I own this already, and I want to rent this out, I don't really feel like that's what we're talking about. For me, it's less, it's more about people who are trying to make businesses out of this and eat up housing stock. And I want to set, and for me, setting a benchmark here is more about cost, right? The average revenue for something like this in our town must be well above the national average. If the national average is $13,000 a year per unit for something like this, we must be well above. And so, because I know what I can rent my house for if I wanted to, and I live right in downtown Camden on Central Street. And so, for me, when I look at the proposals you guys sent over where the cost to like is $250 a year, no way, like, it should be expensive, there should be a barrier, unless you have a real specific reason to need to do it or want to do it. But I think it really needs to be more contextually reviewed. I think it's more about having a review process in a case, you know, having a process for obtaining a license and a different type of license. And if you're in that category where you're building something and running it as a business or for profit as a developer, that cost should be significant to you, as it would be for any business, because if you're taking that much margin, then the city should have a taste too.
Yeah, and thanks, Matt. That's a great segue. And again, there have been a lot of different commercial discussions in the next, that moves us into sort of the next category that we have recently kind of worked with, because, again, it's part of what Pat is saying, you know, the old KISS, and, you know, acronym of Keep It Simple Stupid. But the, but the, 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 when we start getting into non-hosted, non-primary, and those things, that, one of the thoughts is that that becomes very difficult to explain to the voters and make clear. And when voters don't understand, this was Crisso's point prior, they just vote against it. And so, what, what, I think, I think it was Shelly and Jeremy who came up with this idea. I'm not sure how, how, how it became organically grew into a, a proposal. But we move into the next category, the next bullet of the, if you're looking at the open dots, commercial use. Okay, and this is where, instead of, instead of going with, you know, the non-primary, non-hosted, we just, the, the definition as it reads now is that the short-term rental is not owner-occupied during the STR tenancy. Commercial is the primary use of the property and will be regulated as such. Now, I think it, it, it's a better sell to the voters when you start talking about it as a commercial enterprise, which is to Matt's point. It, it, and the fees, again, the fees that have been bandied about are significantly higher now for these potentially. You know, and again, I don't want to say that we've come to any conclusions, but Jeremy had, had suggested some numbers in the thousands for fees for a, a commercial enterprise. You know, something like 2,500 and possibly for, depending on the size of the property, up to 5,000. And that would sort of address, you know, Matt's, Matt's concern that the fees were far too low. I think the fees are adequate for someone who's running a, you know, owner-occupied sort of general, eight, you know, Airbnb-type of unit. Where if we're just covering the costs of getting the inspection done and things like that for staff, that, that's sufficient, because, you know, that, that's sort of the, I think, what the, I think in the, in its origin, what people envisioned Airbnb and those other, you know, entities to be. And then it became this big commercial enterprise, and, you know, it's noteworthy. In the past, when you bought a house and you wanted to claim rental income on your mortgage, you had to have three years of established mortgage, of, of established rental income to be able to claim it. And you had to have the scheduled fees and everything to provide to the bank to say, look, this property will earn this amount of money. And I'm able to rent it out in addition to living in the house or whatever, if you had an ADU. You can actually go out and get mortgages now with the potential for the revenue of an Airbnb without any established revenue or rental history. And that's just another way that, that an outside investor can come in and say, look, I can rent this for $4,000 a month during the five months of the summer, that's 20 grand right there. That's 20 grand of income I can count towards, towards the, the income on the mortgage. Go ahead, John.
So, let me catch up a little bit. In the previous discussions that I've participated in, we've had discussions about, oh, how long would a snowbird have to claim their primary residence is in Camden versus Florida before they fit under this commercial category? But if I'm following it, that's no longer germane, that, you know, as stated here in the bulleted point, it's just the owner is not on site during the short-term rent, and that's the distinction.
Right.
Am I up to speed then on that?
Yeah, this is, this is new, even, this was not discussed in the last workshop, John. You didn't, you didn't miss anything except for a conversation that, that happened, you know, Jeremy and, and Shelly and, and I had a conversation. But they, they, they proposed this and then put it in the memo to the whole board.
Okay, and I, I think I'm comfortable with that. In that if somebody is going through the trouble of putting their place on a platform for a short-term rental, and they're not going to be there, then they're not going to be there for a long time, right? It's not, you know, they'll be there for most, most of the rentals, but, you know, happen to be out of town for one of them. So, I, I'm okay with them.
Okay. So, I, I have a question regarding this. So, say in the case of a duplex, or where someone is renting out, even though they live on the lot, they are renting out an entire house. Is that for short-term rental? You know, would that also be treated with you know, the, the same as an Airbnb that's renting out one room in terms of fees? Because obviously, there's a lot of income being made from an entire house that's.
Sure, and that's, that's a really good question. And it is, it does get to sort of some of the finer points of, of, of the, of the distinctions that we make. And again, I don't know that that's been answered, although Shelly may have some input on that. It did come up in our discussion, and I don't have, I, I'm looking for my notes on it, but I think that I think that was being technically distinguished from the commercial, because you have, as we said, an owner on site, living in the other unit. Is that correct, Shelly?
You could say that, right. It's just like having a primary house in an ADU, but I, yes, it is a whole separate other house, like a, a two, like a duplex type of setup. But at least that person is, the owner is there and on the same lot. And that may not be, you, you can, you can decide. I mean, you all can maybe come to some consensus whether you want it commercial or not, you know.
So, it gets back to whether, you know, is it commercial, because it is short-term, where that house could be rented by someone who needs it long-term. So, it's kind of, you know, again, it's a commercial operation in, in my mind.
Well, yeah, and it, it, that's, that's where we get into that slippery slope. And, you know, again, it's, it, it is difficult, and, and it's all open for discussion. The, the, just as, just as a duplex could be rented out, say it's a three-bedroom duplex, that, that could house a family. Also, a, you know, a one-bedroom in-law apartment over a garage could house a teacher who doesn't have a family. So, the, in a sense, they could also be viewed as commercial. And I want to make sure that we, we decide as a board how we want to make that, draw that line. It is possible, of course, also to scale fees to the number of bedrooms that are being rented. You know, it's not a bad way to approach it. And, and that can be done even if it's not qualified as commercial, because we've already identified that an owner's on the property. And therefore, you could possibly have, you know, just a little bit more coming back to the town from that. I will say that, I will, go ahead, John.
I support the concept of a sliding scale, if you will, based on the number of beds in the rental.
Okay.
You know, I think, you know, to the extreme, a one-bedroom rental should not have as much impact on the community as a five-bedroom, single-family home, so.
Yeah.
The fee structure can reflect that.
Okay.
And, and I will, I will just, I will just say that I think that there's, there's some, some pressure in the town on the budget. I think it's important to note that, and that we're going to be going before the select board. And so, they're, they're going to be, you know, looking at the budget as part of this as well. And so, you know, we'll want to be mindful of that. Some suggestions that have been bandied about is that any of these fees go into an affordable housing budget or available housing budget, however you want to verbage that. And, but, but it may be that the town will be trying to get the money for something else once it gets to the select board. But it's up to us, when we get to the select board, to, to make our pitch and tell them what we think is best. And then, you know, they're going to do what they will do as well, and hopefully we'll come to a reasonable. And tell them what we think is best. And then, you know, they're going to do what they will do as well. And, and hopefully we'll come to a reasonable, you know. Um, balance for what everybody thinks is right. Um.
Um, so.
Go ahead, Pat, yeah.
Uh, John, your thought is that as far as fees go, you're, you want to base it on number of bedrooms?
Or, you know, yeah, yes. You know, I, I clearly think there's a distinction between. The owner on-site residential accessory use that can be, you know, one set of fees. And then the commercial activity, another set of fees. But within each of those categories, I, I think there's a difference in scale and can be a corresponding difference in fees.
Right, like just, just to take a, like a, throw out weird numbers, but like, it could be for a, a owner on-site, the first category. It could be two fifty for a one-bedroom, five hundred for two and seven fifty for three. And then, again, I'm just using this as a. To make it simple, if you have a commercial enterprise, it could be twenty-five hundred for one bedroom. Five thousand for two and seventy-five for three. And I'm just, you know, again, I use that just for the simplicity of the math and to show, not to say that that's the way we should go with it.
Hey Ethan, can I just throw one thing in there as we think about pricing? Um, you know, maybe let's step outside the notion of trying to guess what the valuation is of our, of this, of this license, right? Um, there's other ways, there's auction methodology, there's other things that we may use that we may find that the value of one of these licenses at the. Commercial level is all I'm talking about here. Um, is higher than what we realized or ever thought it would be. And, and the city needs money for a whole bunch of stuff, right? We, we're definitely looking to increase revenue stream. So this is a real opportunity to do so.
Yeah, I think that's, that's an interesting idea. We, we had talked about a lottery. We had not talked about an auction. Um, but that might be an interesting, um, way to, way to see what the value really is to, to folks. Um, especially if there's a, a limit to the number of them. Um, and, um, the.
Because theoretically, you wouldn't issue everyone at one time either, right? Like you'd have some sort of cadence for issuing them, right? You wouldn't just release like three hundred of them at once, right?
Well, I mean, again, there, there's, there's questions about whether to have a cap at all or, or no cap. And, um, you know, they would be processed on a first-serve, first-come, first-served basis or a lottery. Um, and so, you know, I'm in favor of capping the commercial ones. Um, and I think there's support generally across the board for that. I'm not sure there's support in the community or in the select board for that, but, but that's something we will find out. Um, but, but I, I definitely am in favor of coming up with a cap and other.
I mean, when it becomes a revenue conversation, you know what I mean? Like the, you're sort of taking out your own legs if you don't cap it on the commercial side, right? If you don't like consider who's doing the development and what's going on, you're really just hamstringing the city for revenue that we're going to leave on the table. I think you're absolutely right, though, on like the residential side and all those situations where it's owner occupied or it's a full-time residence. I think those are. Those are different situations and would have a different review pathway and sort of management pathway and pricing pathway, I would assume.
Yeah, absolutely. That, that's what this new, that's, that's what this new uh proposal is doing. It's, it's giving us two sort of avenues. Um, and of course, you know, again, just, just to bring it in quickly, um. We have provided that definition for the third open bullet point, which is seasonally restricted cottages. And that's moving on to the next point in the, in the memo. And, um, these are cottages that, um. Are basically, uh, they're, they're already defined in the ordinance in some way. Um, basically, they don't have a water service from November first to April thirtieth. And have tradition, have, have a real tradition in town and in, in Maine in general. Um. Excuse me, and, um, would be, uh, characterized basically as being owner occupied, even if they're into short-term rentals. Um, so they, they fall under the sort of the first category, um, and sort of, because assuming that the owners will come up sometimes during the summer. But also want to rent some out some other times during the summer, but they would not be taking away from what you would call. Available housing stock for a regular resident, you know, someone who would be working year-round in town. It's just for summer, summer, you know, residents. Go ahead there, John.
Um, just a, a question on Shenley's, your memo.
Yep.
When you're discussing this. At the very end, your sentence says, these short-term rentals would not be characterized as being. Owner occupied during the STR tenancy. Is that, is that?
It can go, yeah, it can go either way. This is more like just a, a thought, like, I know, I think we did an analysis. I think there's like. Seventy, seventy-one camps in the whole town that, just by looking at property appraiser, but. I, I guess the idea was be, to be like with the fee structure, the, uh. In-residence, owner residence, residential use of the STR as a residential accessory use, that's like one tier. Um, maybe. And the commercial would be the higher tier as far as fee structure and maybe.
Then we have, we have Chris O. trying to get in.
Oh, sorry, sorry. And the seasonal, seasonal would fall in between or, or however y'all want to do it, but it was the idea, you know.
And Chris will be good for this discussion.
Yeah, he's coming. Just a second.
He's our, he's our resident camp specialist. Hey, Chris O., welcome. We were just, we, we've kind of gone down, uh, the, the, the memo. It's, you know, it's a short memo, but we've talked about the different categories. So the first being the accessory. Use to a residential purpose or resident to a res, primary residence, then the commercial use. And we're, we're right now just touching on seasonally restricted cottages. And, um, as, uh, John pointed out, you're a resident expert on the cottages, um, and camps, um. And, and the question John was asking about was sort of the last line before the direction requested, which is. These short-term rentals would not be characterized as being owner occupied during the STR uh tenancy. Um, that doesn't necessarily, I think what Charlie was saying, what doesn't necessarily lump them into the, uh, commercial use.
Right.
But it does, it does exempt them from the first category, which we have as sort of owner occupied.
Right.
If I understood what you were saying.
That's right, yeah.
But that's up for, for a discussion. That's again, not a, um, not a, not a, a line in the sand.
Right.
Let, let me give Chris some time to get his legs under him for this discussion.
I'm, I'm good.
Well, okay, so, for, for whatever reason, I'm just a little uncomfortable with the distinction. And if, if this group thinks that there's. Um, uh, you know, that that distinction, that it's not heated or. You know, it doesn't have water or sewer during the winter. If, if. The code enforcement officer can keep track of that. Then I, I might be a little more comfortable with it. But otherwise, I'm just a little uncomfortable carving this group out as. As, you know, kind of having to play by different rules.
Um.
Go ahead, Pat.
Shenley, didn't you just say that you guys thought there were about seventy-one camps? Yeah, I, we use the, uh, assessor data because they code everything. And we kind of like did a quick review of that. And that's the number we kind of came up with.
Yeah, this comes from the assessor data and, and you see that, um.
I know.
You see that, that, um.
It's called a camp, yeah.
It's called a camp and, and, and the definition is there. And what I think, um, some direction requested, the first bullet point is. Um, no whole-house heat, seasonal water and wastewater service only and non-insulated. Um, again, if, if you're doing any of those, yeah, that's a proposal, that's right, direction requested. If any, if, if anybody is adding any of those things to a camp, they need to get a permit.
Right.
So that's how the town tracks that. Now, somebody could not do that, right? But, but they do need a permit.
Right.
So let's say I, uh, let's say I'm on Lake McGunta Cook. And I have a home that's weatherized and could be lived in year-round. And my neighbor has a camp per definition, then, then they can. Rent theirs out. In one category, but I'd have to compete for a commercial license, let's say, if I. Was not going to be there. So.
That's correct.
Right.
I'm not, that might be a hard distinction to draw for an outside observer.
I guess I don't feel like it's a hard distinction to draw because we're saying one of these buildings is not winterized. It can't. It, it doesn't have heat. It, it doesn't have, um, you know, running water during the winter.
Right.
And I, I mean, that seems pretty straightforward to me, John. Does it? And if you're saying the other building is winterized, it has heat, it has hot water throughout the year. Uh, you know, running water throughout the year, isn't that enough of a distinction?
Well, I mean, I, Pat, I don't disagree that you can't say one structure is different from the other. But why those differences entitle one of them to have a. Uh, a, uh.
Lesser fee.
Right.
A seasonal.
Well, I think.
Correct that cottage rental fee and the other one doesn't. I don't know why.
Yeah.
Well, I think the distinction is, uh, going back to some, some of the original ideas of this where we're looking at. We're really looking at targeting housing which would be available for someone living in town year-round. And most of these camps that we're talking about, it's not just that they're uninsulated or have minimal heat. You really couldn't, I mean. You would struggle, you would have a very hard life to live in some of these buildings year-round. And they're just not. Four-season accommodation. And the reason we use the assessing data is they're assessed differently because they're not as valuable. As a home, as a property, because they don't have. Um, now, the gray area that I think, John, you're kind of hitting on is that. There are properties that are used as camps seasonally that do get shut down. And the water drain, even if they have some insulation, even if they have heat. Um, so there may be some people, but again, there's, those properties are, are not being. Or have not traditionally been in the year-round housing market. They are properties that are vacation uses even for their primary owner. And that's, I think, where we have the distinction.
Okay.
Does that help?
It does. I, uh. Um, had, had realized when I got on the board that. There's some things about Camden that I don't know that I need to listen and learn about, and this is probably one of them.
Well, John, I, I've lived here for going on, uh, eight, almost nine years and, and, and I'm still learning. Um, and, and I don't have. A particular, um, knowledge of the camps, but I do, I do think that echoing what Chris O. says, um, the. The, when the, when you look at it from the perspective of available housing stock, I think that's where the rub is, where the, where the rubber meets the road for me. This can't be a teacher's residence because teachers would have to be here year-round, um, or at least during the, the winter months for sure. And, and likewise, you know. Um, you know, uh, most employees in town, you know, police, fire, um, anybody like that. So, um. It, it's, it's, it's looking at it from a perspective of tradition, but also what really is the benefit to the community of, of regulating it like a. Commercial enterprise versus putting it in to its own category, simply because it really is not available as, as regular stock. Housing stock. And that, that, that to me makes it pretty straightforward. Um. Chris, do you have anything you want to sort of jump in on this memo since you, you've sort of come, come a little bit behind? We haven't had any groundbreaking discussions. I'll just sort of, uh, uh, address a few things that were said. Um. There's pretty strong support for one owner, one lot as an ADU, um, and allowing that. I did raise my concern that, um, or a suggestion that. As of two thousand nineteen, anybody who's constructed an ADU is, is under the information that they cannot use it in short-term rentals. That's current law in Camden under the ordinance. So I did propose, um. That anything built since two thousand nineteen be exempted or be, be prohibited from going into short-term, but the things that were built before. Uh, be exempted from the ordinance. Um, that's one suggestion that I made and received, I think, fairly reasonable, uh. Approval from the, from the board, John, a little bit iffy on that. Um, and then, um. There's, there's some talk about scaling the fees to occupancy. Um, so, uh, you have, you know, one bedroom might pay a lower fee than a two-bedroom versus a three-bedroom. And then again, a separate category for commercial, which would be significantly higher numbers. And the numbers I bandied about. Again, not, not discuss at any great length, but might be more closer instead of two fifty or five hundred, might be two thou, twenty-five hundred or five thousand. Um, for those commercial enterprises. Um, and then, uh, you know, and, and Matt jumped in and talked about an interesting idea. Um, that we don't really know the value of these licenses for the commercial and what, what, uh, what we might do if we had an auction. Uh-huh, for a commercial license and see what those, those, uh, licenses might actually be worth. I think it's an interesting idea that we hadn't discussed. We had talked. Um, about a lottery. So I think that sort of brings you up to speed unless anybody thinks I missed anything.
Hmm. We haven't talked as much about the, uh, capping of the commercial licenses and. I'm a, I'm a supporter of that.
Hey, Shenley, I just had a quick question. Shenley, if you guys were able to find information about what was considered a camp or not. Have you, were you able to locate any data about, um, unhosted short-term rentals? No, I think Jeremy was trying to find that out and I don't think he was able to get that information. Yeah.
I do know that Jeremy was looking at, has been speaking to the assessor, uh, I believe it's Carrie and, um.
Right.
I, I know he's been in conversations, um, and he's even looking at, uh, possibilities of having, uh, properties that are short-term rentals. In the commercial category assessed differently, um, which would also bring revenue to the town on, you know, in the form of taxes. Um, but, but that's sort of a, in the, out there. I do believe that Granicus has said that they can get us that number.
That's what I. Right.
Yeah, but they, but I think, I think, Pat, I think the reason why it hasn't happened yet is because we have not engaged them.
Yeah.
Um, I think, I think that's, I think that's where, that's where they make, that's where they make their money. Um, and so I don't think they're going to give us that information, but I do think that, that we have a reasonable argument to go, I know that, you know. Um, money is tight and all of these things, but, um, Granicus, I think, you know, or another group, but, uh, you know. Again, we had the meeting with Granicus, so I'll just use them as an example. Um, and I'm not sure about the amount of dollars involved. But, um, I, I'm under the, under, under the, um, I, I'm, I believe it's something along the lines. Of, um, okay, wait, Stephanie, before you go, is there anything else you wanted to jump in with?
Uh, well, I guess I just wanted to say this is an excellent discussion as I put in the chat. And, um, I think anything that can be done to increase long-term ADUs is a real bonus. Um, it's even if we have more of them, it could free up an elderly person moving out of a bigger house into a smaller unit. Freeing up a bigger house feasibly for even if we have our housing trust funding underway to turn that into more dwellings. Uh, and or as Matt was saying, so younger people can move in. So. I think long-term ADUs can be a real bonus and it helps some people stay in their home. I mean, I.
Yeah, that, that, I like, I like that angle. Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, thanks so much for joining us.
Well, thank you all for your work. Jeremy tried to get me on the board one time, but I said, okay, I gotta work on the housing trust.
You got, well, that's good. We need people doing that good work too, Stephanie. So thank you.
Thank you all.
Please come back anytime.
Thank you. Bye.
Say, Pat, in, in response to your question, it was a little bit different than this, but. I recall that Granicus had given us in their presentation a number that there were. Three hundred and ninety-eight listings in, in Camden and of those ninety percent were. Single-family residences. So I think with those two numbers, I don't know if you can get exact, but.
Yeah.
You're looking at about three sixty. I think that's what we've been estimating, John. You're right.
Yeah, yeah, I had heard that. I remember those figures also, but I didn't know how exact they may or may not be.
Well, right, because what you don't know is if somebody's living there, um, you know, six months out of the year. And then renting it out for six months out of the year, you know, that sort of thing. They, they may not be, I, I would say they're probably not all commercial. Um, but, but, but a high number of them likely are.
Okay. Um, Shenley, do you all have any concept of how? How many people are looking for housing, how many families are looking for housing versus how many singles are looking for housing?
I don't have that information, like you mean just from being in planning?
Yeah, just from being approached or I I.
Good question for Stephanie, yeah.
Yeah.
We can certainly reach out and ask her those sorts of things, but, oh, Chris O?
Uh. I can just, uh, uh. There's an organization called the National Low Income Housing Coalition, which recently, about a week ago. Released a state report on Maine in terms of. They they've done a lot of the numbers of like what's available, what, where the, where the population is for certain types of income for certain. Uh, I can share that, uh, it 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 won't give us exact numbers for like how many people are looking for houses in Cam- Camden per se. Uh, but we do know that both in concrete and anecdotally. In Knox County, there's basically nothing available. Um, like there's zero, like for in terms of apartments for rent long term, there's. Basically nothing, like the availability rates are under five percent and and that's not just Camden, that's the whole region.
Yeah.
I was just trying to question, you know, whether there's more demand for single family houses or is there more demand for ADUs or apartments, you know?
I I think there's demand for any kind of housing that anyone can find, whether it's a studio apartment or, uh, I mean. I certainly see on some of the local community Facebook pages, people desperately looking for anything.
Right.
Whether it's an eighty.
Yeah, we have people coming in and asking about, uh, renovating and existing structures and adding, just because of the new. Density that the state allow is is. Uh, made us have to do, but anyways, I'm getting, we're getting quite a few people coming in and asking, well, how many units can I put here? How many units can I put there, so, um. Yeah. But I don't, you know, I don't have the number.
Yeah, and if you keep an eye, like Chris was saying, if you keep an eye on the market, just as far as like, you know, Facebook or or even Craigslist or whatever. What you see largely, by and large, is, um, right now, just trickles of. Uh, seasonal rentals, which is the reverse season, right? So it's it's basically November through, uh, you know, through April or May. And and that's, so most of the places you're seeing and and the prices I can tell you anecdotally look like. You know, pretty much around for a one bedroom, nineteen hundred to two thousand dollars for those five months. You know, each each month for those five months, um, and that's, that's, you know, not not, neither available nor affordable really for most people. Um, for the spaces that are being offered.
No.
Um, and and, you know, we all know that this is not the only, we, that's another thing that's just echo that we've talked about is. It's not the only solution to the housing crisis, it's by far, just, it's really literally just one prong of a fork. Um, and so much more needs to be done across the board, but I do think it's the one that that can turn the quickest return. Um, in as far as, uh, opening up properties, um, and and, you know. There's, there's going to be an argument that some of these properties will never be affordable for anybody, you know, if you've got a five bedroom house on bay view. You know, overlooking the ocean, um, and you take that out of the short term rental market. They're not gonna put that into a a thing that people that are teachers or firefighters or even, you know, seasonal workers are gonna be able to afford, we get that. Um, it's not gonna, it's not gonna fix, you know, those situations that could still be bought by somebody else who just decides they're gonna rent it. You know, um, you know, own it and just use it seasonally, um, and or, you know, again, the the. The other thing, oh, I think we didn't discuss this, but it's gotta be here on the middle somewhere, yeah. Um, going back to page one at the very bottom, we talked this over a little bit, but, um. Defining short term rentals to include rentals not to exceed twenty seven days. Now, we chose twenty seven days for simplicity, it seems a little bit odd of a number, but of course, there's February. And we wanted to allow somebody who's renting month to month, um, you know, uh, any property month to month is exempt from the short term rental or. Ordinance altogether. So, you know, that allows, that allows for some of these, you know, the things like the main media workshop, it allows for traveling nurses. It allows for long term, you know, housing, but it but it does, it does exempt it from the short term rental ordinance. So anybody who's saying that they have no economic use for their property, you know, the month to month avenue is still available to them. And they can, they can even rent it for four thousand dollars a month in the summer if that's what it it yields.
So that that's one of the, uh, one of the towns that I spoke with, um, they said that was, they felt that that was the benefit of a cap. Is the, the you, or the rentals that don't make it into that year's. Um, uh, short term rentals because of the cap, basically, they see them come in as monthly rentals or, you know, that they, um. Uh, they do have a longer term. Yeah.
Yeah, so they do trickle into the housing stock.
Yeah, so, so some of the towns were able to express that to you, Lucia.
Yes.
Oh, that's good. Okay.
I mean, it's very helpful for our, for our, one of our primary goals, right?
Right.
To show that these, that the the, the limiting the number of short term rentals will in in the end increase housing stock, so. Um, so while we're on the subject of caps, does anybody have, um. Anybody want to be start ta- start talking about a number, um, or a percentage, um, I know that I had asked.
Or a way, you can cap, people cap per, other places cap per. Block, per neighborhood, I mean, there are other ways of limiting it as well too, not just saying. Flat out.
Some, some do like percent of cow, of ha- of housing stock.
Right.
Um, which is, I think we've seen that in several of the ordinances that we've looked at, I just don't know how we find, Jeremy did say he could get that number of housing stock, Shenley. But I know that he didn't probably have time to turn that around.
I think it's like twenty, twenty nine, twenty three hundred units, housing units.
Yeah, that's.
So most of the towns that I looked at and, um, that had a cap also had, um, the the percentage. It was a percentage and it's right around ten percent, I mean, um, one of them has it at nine percent, which is a very arbitrary, but that was. Um, nine percent, um, Kennebunkport has twelve point five percent. Um, but they don't allow ADUs, so that would take that out.
Right.
Um. You know, there's, but but they all revolve slightly around the ten percent mark. Um, the only one that's very, very tight is South Portland, um, simply because I think they, they really need the housing, so. Um, they are like two point five percent of their housing stock.
So what did we say the number of homes in Camden was at?
I think we, it's around twenty three, twenty nine, some, somewhere like that, uh, that's just kind of an estimate at this point.
Twenty nine hundred.
Yes.
So, if you multiply twenty nine hundred by point ten.
Two hundred and ninety.
Right, right, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna want a lower number than that.
Yeah, I think so.
Well, uh, I know that there was also, we were thinking that maybe because of changing this. Uh, in addition to number caps, uh, by by making some of them commercial entities. Doesn't that, they're now commercial entities, so that has some potential restrictions based on our current zoning, right?
No.
Why could?
Would if.
We, we, we hadn't discussed that, but that is certainly another avenue to take, Chris O, is to, you know, take it out of. Take those, those entities out of any residential neighborhoods, um. That's another avenue we have not discussed.
Yeah.
Yes, Matt, I see your hand.
Uh, thank you, um, I was just gonna say that, um, it seems like. Getting into kind of the weeds on. What the percentage should be or what the method of this, and that would then dictate a a number in the stock, right? Which I think is one side of the discussion, then the other side is more of the, you know, like the supply and demand question for us is. There's no requirement for us to release that entire stock at once, so Ethan, when you go like, that's too many. I agree, but maybe it's not too many over the next ten years or something like that, right? And there's a, there's a schedule for release or something like that, that's why I guess my big question here, listening to everyone is. Who holds the pen? And what is the proposed date, if there is one, for some kind of draft ordinance? To be reviewed and then commentary applied to.
Yeah, that's a great question, Matt, so the pen is held by Shenley and Jeremy, um, at at our direction. Um, and and the way, the way the last, uh, Chris O and I were asked to jump in on the, um. The last select board, sort of the year end update meeting with the select board. And what was discussed at that time was the need for another select board, uh, planning board joint workshop. And at the end of that discussion, I made it clear that what we needed to do was to show up there with a draft ordinance. So that we could have something concrete to work from, so the select board can sort of chime in and we don't have to do the select board's bidding. But in the end, the select board does have the right to strike anything we do that they disapprove of before sending it on to the voters. We can't send something straight to the voters, we have to clear it through the select board, so it behooves us to work with them.
Right.
And to hear their, hear their input and to, um, hopefully come up with a good compromise or whatever, we, we don't know where everybody stands and. It's possible they would say no to caps whatsoever, um, it's, it's also possible they would say ten percent sounds reasonable. But we won't go any lower, um, so all those things are speculative, but what we want to do is come up with our proposal first and and and. What what you've seen, um, also from other towns, because, you know, again, you're you're newer to this, but I know you're not new to the issue. Um, but we have looked at other towns significantly and what they do is, I think it's Far Harbor, is it, Pat, where they. Um, the town reviews, the town council reviews, I don't know if they're town councilors, select boards. But they review every year the number and sort of decide on what the cap should be, or Lucia, maybe you could, could, um, time in.
Kittery.
Kittery does that?
Kittery does that, okay, great, so that's another possibility, but then, you know, again, that leaves the the power, again, it lies with the select board to make that determination. And select boards change, um, and so we don't know, you know, um, who, what, what the, what the leanings are right now on the present board. And we don't, we won't know what the future boards are, but that's one way it can be done as far as, you know, releasing more and I I do understand, I like the idea, Matt, of leaving open. The possibility that we start low and increase as we decide like this would be beneficial to the town, like leave it open, let it, let it be known. That, um, that that there is a potential to increase that number, um, depending on how it looks, it's much harder to to scale it back, I think, than it is to increase it.
Look, there's, I think there's, um, you know, I I have some mild experience in. The process of legislation and governance and dra- and sort of the, the how the sausage is made on this and one of the. Tricks here that's used, not tricks, but like, uh, uh, methodologies, I guess, for lack of a better term, is that. You know, we can pass an ordinance or propose an ordinance and have it. Decrease that certain things will need to be in place, right, that we know, but we don't have to figure out all the details, right? We can certainly say that we're gonna do this, but there's gonna be a follow up piece of of ordinance. That's gonna define all of those little details that we haven't figured out yet, but we know we're gonna figure out over the next twelve or eighteen months or something of that nature. And I think when we, what you're saying about the select board is is right, like any town, any piece of. Of, 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 any government entity of any type has all types of personalities on that decision making board or body. Or whatever you're going into with some piece of proposed governance, right? Um, I think it's, it it would be possible to just sort of use that framework to get. Them into the boat on some higher level things and then we can go sort of hack it out with what we want on sort of the finer issues. Uh, uh, in the details, I guess, but already have it set up that we gotta talk about, right, they're already in that corner, so to speak.
I think just, just a sort of a follow on from Ethan, so sort of where we are feeling in the, in the process that I think may help. Um, is, we were asked to come back to the the joint session because. The idea is that probably in January, we would have our public hearing on draft ordinance amendments. Um, and go through all those time schedules so that then it gets to the select board in February so that we're in timeline to get it on the ballot for June. I mean, I think that's sort of the backend, so at those stages that there would be a public hearing of the planning board. To have more, so, you know, but that we, the idea here is that we're. You know, s- some of us on this call have been talking these things through for several years and. Um, to try and hone in on that, what are the key things that we really think are important? Um, and then go through it with the select board at a workshop where we can te- take the temperature of the select board. And come back and finalize for the public hearing.
So just so I understand, just because I'm, I wanna make sure I understood what you said, I'll pay it back, um, the next step for us in the. The legislative process here, for lack of a better term, with the town of Camden and the select board on this matter. Is to generate a piece of draft, uh, uh, draft ordinance. At what, by some point in January, you were saying, and then it gets presented to them for review and then they come back to us in a meeting in February and then.
Yeah, I think actually just a little sooner than that, to be quite honest, I think Shenley's been working on it. Um, and and what happened is in working on it, the, the, what they, what they realized was they were getting bogged down in the definitions. Okay, and what, the biggest problem with the definitions was, was the, the non-hosted, non-primary, all these things. I thought would be confusing for voters, so what was proposed then, and that's why we're here today mainly, is what was proposed was these three categories. Either the owner on site, a commercial use and seasonal camps. And so that was sort of the thing, and then you see on the, on the memo, there's some requested, you know, direction request, and I think we've hit most of those, Shenley. If there's any that you're looking for, so I think they're in a pretty good spot to then turn around in a matter of, I don't know, I don't wanna put too much. Pressure on it, but is it a week or two weeks or something like that, Shenley, to come up with a draft?
We, oh, yeah, I mean, that's, I think, um, I, you're, you're making, I, it's just trying to get the fundamentals of. Of how you guys wanna go and like Matt was saying, the details come later, I mean, we can, you know, but do you, how do you wanna do? Do you wanna do residential and some as commercial and by doing it a certain way, it helps automatically cap things? It, you know, you can accomplish the same thing different ways, obviously, but, but yeah, and I don't think the December meeting is gonna happen with. Select board, I don't think we're on for that.
Yeah, that, that was probably a little bit, um, optimistic, I see that Steven is, uh, waving his hand, so wanna let you in, bud.
Thank you, um, as you probably know, I've been following and talking about this issue for several years. And would like to point out that the issue was initiated by the hospitality industry in town. It was never instituted as a result of excess police calls to short term rentals, fire calls to short term rentals. Or human crises to short term rentals. I recognize that in the last several years, the whole housing situation in Camden has complicated this entire issue. Um, I thought a year or two ago, we took a partial step, actually, several years ago, the first partial step. Was to limit rentals to seven nights, to, uh, reduce the turnover in neighborhood. Uh, another thing that was done two years ago was instituting a policy that basically seemed to say. What we are now calling commercial rentals had to register, had to get registration numbers. Had to put their numbers in their advertising, et cetera. Um, in terms of the proposals that you are talking about, I have absolutely no qualms with whatever you care to do. About what is classified as commercial property, because they are commercial properties. They should be reassessed as commercial properties and as far as the fee schedule goes, I leave that up to you. Several of you have talked about fee income and an income stream. But personally, I think that's a little bit of a fantasy, because you were talking about setting up a bureaucracy of. Applications, permits, uh, inspections for, who knows, what may be two hundred properties. No one on the town staff can tell me that there is the available labor at this time to do that level of work. So, we're obviously gonna be talking about another position in town and maybe even two positions in town.
Can, can I?
Yep, jump in, Chris O, thanks, Stephen.
Yeah, Steve, thank you for your comments, just a couple. I just wanna, I I I just, can I just respond to a couple of things?
Shoot.
Um, the the first is, I I would disagree with your premise that this was initiated as our discussions in my time on this board. It's been looking at trying to align things with the comprehensive plan and other issues. It has not been driven in my time on the board by the hospitality industry. Um, and just on the on the fee structure that you're discussing, the point of raising the fees is not necessarily that it's gonna make money for the town. But that the fee structure would cover the cost of whatever staff hours we need for these, for any, and then that's been part of a broader town-wide reassessment of of fee structures of saying if if we're putting two hundred hours into short into uh uh looking at at lodging, whether it's short-term, like those people in that industry should be covering the cost. If we have to add a halftime person, the fee structure will cover that cost. That's where that math comes in. That's all.
All right, in continuance, um in terms of a cap, okay, a cap may be a very reasonable idea. But I think that the board should take a full understanding that the occupi- the owner occupied rentals, those are people of our community. Those are retired people, they are, could even be teachers, could be whatever. A lot of people depend on that income in order to survive the ever-increasing cost of living in Camden. So that if there is any discussion of a cap, that it should come on the commercial side.
Yeah, and that's that's the temperature of the board. I don't wanna interrupt you, but but just so you understand. But no one is talking about capping those. The only discussion that we have had about is whether or not new ADUs would be allowed to go into short-term rental. And again, I don't wanna keep interrupting, but I just wanna address your points that come up.
Well, the other thing is, in terms of the reality of the current real estate market. The housing situation in Camden is really sad. There's no doubt about it. Um, but the problem is, none of what we're talking about here tonight, I think, is gonna facilitate the housing market. If you drive commercial properties out of the short-term market, fine, they'll go on the real estate market. But they're certainly not gonna go on at a price that the people we're trying to attract can afford. Um, and this is a separate problem, and this is a huge problem. And the other thing is the loosening up of zoning by the state may wind up creating more housing. But I don't think even ADUs are always to be looked at as potential short-term rentals. Because we have loosened up some of our zoning laws, the state has loosened up some of their zoning laws. And some of these ADUs, because of now getting frontage on driveways, et cetera, could be sold off as separate lots. Would they be affordable? Depends on the ADU. Uh, my last comment is just, in terms of the summer cottage rentals, I don't know a lot of people that have them, but I do know a few people have them. Um, and in order to have them, they rent them out a few weeks of the year. So should they get a break compared to the other people that are renting, who are theoretically even more occupied units? Um, if you wanna get rental, if you feel the town deserves a slice of the pie of short-term rentals, then it should be everybody's short-term rentals. And I think that's it for me.
Thank you, Stephen. I really appreciate your comments and and welcome you to any of our discussions.
Thank you.
Um, I I guess, um, yeah, so I we we already addressed one of your comments, which was the the um idea of caps. Um, really, I think we're only talking about on commercial rentals for the caps. Um, now I have to acknowledge that if if my, with my meeting that says that new ADUs um, under the new state regs and everything else, um, the density requirements are being loosened. Um, it would go against the spirit of that legislation to allow those to go into short-term reg- re- rentals. Um, that's my position. And I think, you know, some of the board is in agreement. That would arguably be a cap insofar as no new ADUs since two thousand nineteen would be allowed to go into short-term rentals. You could take a position against that, and and I would understand why. Um, and I'm not totally sold on it. I'm just, it's something that I do think um has merit. Um, just because no one who's built a short-term or an ADU since two thousand nineteen did it with the idea that they were allowed to do it into short-term rentals. Um, and the other thing is, um, I I wanted to echo what Chris O said. I am definitely the senior member of the board. Nothing of my discussion on this issue has ever been spurred on or influenced by or affected by any interest of the lodging industry. I have no, um, you know, we we have talked about leveling the playing field. If they're regulated a certain way, that also ADUs, or I'm sorry, the short-term rentals probably need to be for safety reasons and that sort of thing regulated. But the but the board, every time that I've been in this discussion, came at it from a safety um, and a and a uh and a housing stock, available housing stock angle. Was really where we always were from the from the moment that it first started, discussions first started several years back. Um, you may be talking about prior to my uh my being on the board. Um, but even going back to members that I recall when it was Mark Segen Thaler and Matt Siegel and Rosie and um um, forgetting a couple, but even that group, um, never, when we discuss, we would discuss eighty uh short-term rentals back then, and it was never done from the from the uh instigation of the lodging industry. So that's, yeah, I think that was, that definitely came up probably five, seven years ago, maybe, but I've been on the board a long time. And it hasn't been ever proposed to us by anybody. It always came germane from within the organ, from the board itself. Um, and and some discussions that we had with the select board. Um, and then uh the the final thing on on that is, um, as far as the ADUs versus the seasonal camps, et cetera, um, I I don't have a strong opinion. I mean, I don't think we ever said in particular that that they would be uh gain an advantage over the the owner occupied. Um, I don't think that was ever ever indicated. I think they're just being set aside from the commercial, which means they're not hit at the highest rate. Um, was was the idea, so that those people could afford to keep their camps and sort of a tradition that's been allowed in town.
Correct.
Um, does anybody else wanna jump in and and respond to anything that they heard from Stephen or anything else that they're looking at? And then I wanna make sure we circle back to um Shenley for more, anything she needs further direction on.
Um, oh.
Okay, first Pat, then Lucia.
Uh, one of the things we had talked about the last time we met, I think, was a cap, I mean, it's low, but a cap of twenty-five for commercial. I don't, do you remember that?
Well, we threw around some numbers. That that's definitely a low number. Um, it's, but it, you know.
Yeah, we talked about twenty-five, fifty, yeah, and starting off core instead of higher.
Right, right.
Right.
I can't find.
So that that's why when we started talking about ten percent of available or of of housing stock or whatever. Um, I I think that was that was exceedingly high based on the numbers that we have here. Um, but I do, yeah, I do wanna let, did you have more on that, Pat? Cause I've got Lucia next, and I see Matt's hand up.
Uh, no, go ahead.
Um, two things. One, regarding um regarding the caps. Uh, again, this is just going from um different towns that do cap, particularly the um unhosted or the commercial uh properties. And that is that they all end up with a waiting list. And what's lovely about the waiting list is that those people on the waiting list get first dibs the following year. So basically, people that didn't get to do, or didn't get to list their unit or their house the previous year do get first bid in in the next year. So everybody sort of gets a turn. Um, the other thing is, is they they have a non-transferable um uh policy where the only way that it transfers is if the property transfers, or the ability to rent transfers in that year is if the property sells to an immediate family member, like if it's given to kids or whatever. Uh, then they hold the license, or they they get to transfer the license. But otherwise, what happens is that license for that year gets revoked, and it gets given to one of the waiting list people. So there's an opportunity to um, you know, to get off the waiting list in that in that way as well. So that's um all I have to say about caps. Um, but then the other thing I wanted to say regarding the reverse grandfather clause of the, you know, twenty nineteen units is um Kennebunkport, actually, they have, they have a rule that no dwelling units, entire dwelling units, um, that were permitted after two thousand nine are allowed to be licensed as STRs. So there is precedent to that.
Thanks, Lucia. That's all great. That's great information. Uh, Matt, I saw your hand up, and then we'll go to Chris O.
Yeah, very quickly, it it's uh as we continue to discuss potential cap numbers and potential um fee costs is, uh, I would uh advocate for not having that specifically in this draft. That we would simply state, we intend to have a limited number of of licenses that will go through a process, and they will have an associate fee that will be determined at, you know, in the next some interval. Because it sounds like there's just a big discussion, like we don't have a lot of data, we could use more data, we could probably use a little bit more feedback. Um, some more, cause cause it, I just, I I can't help but hear a lot of opinion here, you know, like a lot of like our own uh personal perceptions and some of our own personal research and things like that. I haven't heard a lot of like uh uh first source material. So I'd like to see more of that before we make a decision on um exactly how many licenses, or how many licenses and how much it'll cost.
Yeah, I hear you. I hear you. Uh, Chris O?
Yeah, well, I think I think that Shenley and Jeremy have have some of those numbers. I know in in previous meetings, we've sort of talked about uh what a fee structure, you know, if it's three hundred dollars times a hundred houses that, you know, we we've sort of, we do have some of those number. I mean, I think that we don't have to have those definite numbers in now. We we do need to have them eventually. Um, the piece I would, uh, the sort of, it's come up a few times, uh, and I I sort of go back to touting my horn about available versus affordable housing when we're having these conversations. And I did a quick scan through recently of what properties, you know, what shows up for VRBO and and such in Camden and Rock, and you know, it isn't five-bedroom Bayview Street homes. It's one and two-bedroom apartments. And so I just, I sort of wanna reiterate that, that a lot of what we're talking about are the properties in downtown that did used to be available for bartenders and, you know, and then, as I've said earlier, um, then there are the two and three-bedroom homes that are upper-middle income families are not available for them. So they're now looking at Hope Lincolnville Appleton. And the next tier down economically, who were looking, traditionally looked at Hope Lincoln and Appleton, are now looking farther and farther. I mentioned this the other day, my my primary example of this is a guy I met a year or two ago at Napa Auto Parts in Rockland, who's just working the parts, working the counter, and he lives in Gardner. And he's commuting to Rockland to work a minimum way, you know, I mean, so the real, we have to think of this holistically, regionally, and that that ripple effect. Um, but the majority of these homes that are in short-term rentals aren't the high-end six, seven-figure properties in town. They're the smaller ones.
Yeah, that's that's good, good insight.
Sort of wanna keep that in our conversations.
Yeah, thanks, Chris O. Thank you. Shenley, go ahead.
Uh, I, yeah. On the cap part, I mean, I know, I know we don't wanna get bogged down in the details, right, but are you all, what do you all think about that approach about leaving some of the details out?
We're, we're gonna have to get into the details eventually.
Eventually, yeah.
Wait, please stop for a second. We're just gonna make sure we're having one person talk at a time. So first, Chris O, and then Matt.
Yeah, I I just, I mean, I think, you know, I I understand Matt's i- i- very fresh take, which is always great to have fresh takes and fresh ears. Um, I sort of feel like the rest of us have sort of been kicking this around long enough, and I think we all know where we are. Whether we've said it out loud or not of, you know, I mean, Ethan, you've done a couple of straw polls in our meetings to sort of get a sense of what people are feeling in terms of caps and um, and and again, that's sort of where we need to be at this stage, is to say, this is, this is what we, the planning board are ready to propose. And we, maybe we're not getting to a definite number, but we have to make that call relatively soon, if we're thinking to get this to a joint meeting in January, a hearing in January, you know.
Right, right. And I appreciate that. Go ahead, Matt.
Um, so two quick things there. So certainly not trying to slow down your process. In fact, um, I would love to keep pace with everything you're doing. My only request is to design narrative in that ordinance that allows us to keep that pace and not get hung up with the with the 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 select board or voters or whomever, right? In this initial move to get in place a more expanded uh STR resolution of some kind, right? That full stop there. Secondly, I just, I'm asking questions, and I'm just not hearing really good answers, frankly, as to why certain numbers, and there's still so many opinions, that it sounds like it would be on, like, like, I'm not sure what the urgency is to pass something of that detail right now. Like, where is the, where is that urgency?
Well, it again, I think part of it is first, we're not passing something, we are proposing something, and we're going into a joint workshop with the select board. And so what we're trying to do is say that where are the planning board, who have worked on this for a number of years, taken a lot of information, we've met with Granicus, which is an organization that provides data, um, and supports towns. It also goes, it's something I meant to address with you, but they also even do permit licensing and all of that stuff, depending on what what you choose to en- engage them to do. Um, and then, so we've had all these conversations, we've looked at other towns. And as you've heard, the numbers range from Portland, South Portland and Portland, I think, to like two point nine percent to somewhere around ten to twelve percent of housing stock is, are the numbers. Um, and that's, that's a very, you know, those are, those are actual data-driven points that other communities have done. Um, now, whether you say that, obviously, when I say, well, if ten percent of of thirty-nine-hundreds is like three hundred ninety, or is it twenty-three-hundred, twenty-nine-hundred, is that what it was?
Probably twenty-nine, twenty.
With two hundred ninety, to me personally, that's too high. That's a personal judgment. And I'm taking it right out of the air, and I'm saying that's too high for me. I am much more comfortable down in the number around a hundred or below um, for the commercial enterprises. Um, that's, that's the personal judgment. Um, based on what I, what I think of of having lived in the town and seeing what's going on around us. Um, that's something that eventually we all, and and as Chris O said, we have done straw polls on that uh across the board um, to see where people generally stand. Um, again, this goes to the select board, and we go in there and say, we think, you know, let's say, you know, five percent of available housing stock or housing stock in town is a good number, or give them a strong number like a hundred or a hundred and twenty-five. And then they say, we don't want caps at all. Right? So this this is where we, we're just trying to get something that we can bring to them, and 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 I've said this, and I said this in a private meeting recently. This is the hill I'm willing to die on, and I'm willing to ride down the hill and say, I believe these caps really matter, and that this is, it's really going to have the the quickest turnaround to getting some actual housing into the community. Um, much quicker than the high fees that will go into a housing fund that will then eventually maybe build some housing or something like that. I would love that as another option, but this is the first prong of the fork for me, and and I'm willing to die on the hill of caps. And I'm going to go to the select board and advocate for it, and they may not like it, and they may not take it. They may, I don't know. Um, but, you know, from the select board perspective and the planning board perspective, we have to come up with a solid proposal that we go to them with. And if they say no caps, then you're right, that we've been wasted all this time talking about numbers and the weeds and all this stuff.
No, no, I'm not proposing no cap. Are you doing?
I was saying that they may come back with no caps, and and I understand that, you know, so, but my point was simply to to say we can spend a lot of time, but we have spent a fair amount of time on it. And so, you know, if we did, if we, you know, we could do this right here and say, um, who on the board would would support, you know, a number of one hundred? And then everybody raises their hand, right? Um, that that's just a number we pulled out of the air based on what we know about three hundred ninety rentals out there right now. And taking, taking and making it basically one quarter of them. That's essentially, it's a slice right off the top. That's the way we we've sort of looked at it. It, I can't say that that's got any strong support in any other data. Um, you know, but that's, that's something that, based on all the discussions that we've had and looked at, that's what we think is a, is a good direction for the town to go. And then we take that to the select board, and the select board says, okay, well, you know, we've heard you, maybe we have, maybe we double that number. Or maybe we have no caps or something like that. We don't. Okay, well, you know, we've heard you, maybe we have, maybe we double that number, or maybe we have no caps or something like that. We don't know. What's gonna happen, but we are trying to stake a, you know, give something concrete to the select board to work from. John?
I'd like to talk a little bit about caps and there's the number component. But Lucia was also talking about a, another community that if you uh. If you didn't get an assignment, one year you went on a waiting list. And, you know, there's other, other ways of doing it. You can throw something open. Every year. And, you know, we had a discussion earlier that if that's the case, then a. Commercial operation that was looking to buy. A property in Camden, a short term rental that property. Would not have the confidence. That they would be able to get a return on their investment in a, any given year. So, you know, I'm a proponent of. Caps and I think we should include that in our initial ordinance. You know, I might. Um, be more inclined to have that number a little bit higher than others, but. Um, I think we ought to have some. Uh, and um. I'm not so sure they should be something that you get on a waiting list for. I think it might be. Something that people compete for each year. But I, it's a discussion that I think we can. You know, time might be running short, but I, I think it deserves a little more discussion.
So John, you're saying that every year, everybody would re-enter the the lottery?
No, that's, that's an approach.
As a, yeah, as opposed to, once you've got it, you have it till you let it go.
Well, that's gonna be true also, um, just, just to throw this in there, you could have. A lottery, someone's in the short term rental market with a license and then they pull that out of the short term rental market during that fiscal year. Someone on the waitlist would still then be available to jump up into that slot, but not, not necessarily year to year, but just, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm, Crisso, I'm undecided, really. You know, the, the idea of making it simple or looking for analogs and I, I guess there are. Um. Um, um, moorings in Camden Harbor. And you get on a waiting list if you don't get it one year and. You're just kind of move yourself up. And that's very understandable, you know?
I was, I was, it's funny, I was thinking moorings and docks and and stuff like that when you said it that. You're like, okay, well, I'm on the waitlist and when somebody lets their, their license go, I'll be. First and, but you know, or do you have a lottery of the, this year, five? Five expired and didn't renew, so we're gonna lottery, we're gonna raffle off those five. To the first five people on the wait, I mean, that's. This, now we're really getting into the minutia details of mechanics of how it will.
Yeah.
Work.
Just to let you all know, from what I've gleaned from these five or six different towns that. Um, that I looked into, um, regarding caps, what they do is they open it up December first. And they close it, you know, January or whatever. And it's first come, first served, whoever fills out there. And it's every year they have to apply for the license. And so the first. You know, three hundred or whatever their cap is, get their license in and make their payment. That's who gets to be on, the rest after the cutoff are on a waiting list.
And.
Simple.
Forever?
No, no, no.
Okay.
Yeah, of those Lucia. Do you know if any of them are more than one or two years? Old in terms of how long they've been doing it?
Um, I think the oldest one is twenty twenty.
Yeah, that's okay.
So, uh, because I, I don't think this was such a.
Well, no, yeah, I don't, yeah, it hasn't been, I, I just. With anything like that, maybe, but I keep thinking it would be nice to know, somebody was like, oh, we did this for four years and this, this worked great.
Right. I, I did try to ask those questions, you know, um.
Yeah, so I think three years is the max we're gonna get, so.
Yeah. Yeah, and um. There. I guess there, there's one, Kittery does a really weird thing where they open it up. Um. I think in the beginning of December and the amount of requests they received by the end of December, that sets their cap. Which is kind of weird because each year it could be different.
Right, yeah.
I don't know what. You know, how that. How that affects their numbers. Um. But. That's basically it, but all of these towns, you have to renew and you have to request it each year.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Licensed.
Right, so it's not like you can have it in perpetuity.
That would make sense to me and I almost like the idea of a lottery too. But.
Yes, commercial? Or?
Just for commercial, right. And I think that that's what, um, the, the experience of Granicus had told us was that the. The first come, first served could, could be a burden on staff. Um, and you know, could, could cause some sort of an influx of like all of a sudden hundreds of applications or whatever coming in, um. Whereas the lottery is, is really, it's hard to argue the fairness of it from that perspective. Um, and, and the lottery recycles every year. Um, that, that means that someone who is purchasing a property. Who wants to be in the commercial market, um, doesn't have a guarantee that every year they're gonna be able to run it in the short term rental market and needs to. To purchase with that, with that knowledge beforehand, so. Um, that, I think the lottery is a better, a better. Method.
I would agree with that.
And it has been implemented with, with success in other communities and Granicus was. Point that out. I, I haven't revisited their slides from, from that presentation, but I know that they indicated, um, communities that have done that. And we could still implement with that, you know. You select a few others who are on that waitlist, which in case some, one of those drops out of the market during that one fiscal year. Um, they could then move into it, but that would, you know.
So the, the other thing that's kind of interesting is a lot of these apply for it, well, um. A lot of them apply for it and end up not being the owners or, you know, not having the right. Um, they, they can't show their tax records or whatever, so they're, you know, they're automatically rejected. But so that, that's kind of an aspect of it too.
Did you get an idea of how often that happens? Or me?
I didn't. I did, but it does happen.
I mean, you could limit, you could limit by. Person. Like, you know, some families are trying to make, right, they're trying to maintain their family home. Or whatever, and they're gonna short term rent, distinguish that from. Somebody, a million, somebody doing a million, a lot of different properties.
Right.
And do the cap on a person instead of. Yes, but I guess that would still be non-occupied, the non-in residents. Too bad we couldn't find some way to get long term, a long term person. What if a company buys a piece of property, uh, uh. And says, oh, we have an onsite person that lives there. That's a long term rental, but they're gonna Airbnb. Another part of it out or. An ADU on it, I guess they're onsite.
Yeah, I guess, we're, we're still trying to stick to the, we're still trying to stick to the, to the definitions that we have. I, I like the way we've got it. The, the buying with the, with the onsite versus commercial.
Okay.
Um, and, and, and that, I think that's the, the simplest messaging that we can give to the community. Um, and of the select board.
Okay.
Um, and I think it is, it is a distinction as far as, um, as far as the. The, um, the benefits and it's not a, it's not, it, you know, it's not a, a exclusionary. Non-resident policy, it's about people who own and live on their property. It's not, it's not because you don't live in Camden or something like that that we're saying. It's because you actually occupy the house. And that's what, that, what we're, what we're valuing.
So are.
So.
I'm sorry, can I just ask, are we saying that if, and the owner has to be. A, um, a person, not an entity?
Right.
That's correct, right.
That applies for the.
Well, yeah, for that one, but, but, but if, yeah, I mean, there has to be an, an owner, but I mean. Again, if you're going into the commercial market, I think, you know, it's almost anything goes at that point, right? Because. Um, there's gonna be an owner of the property.
The owner's gonna have to apply, even if it's commercials.
But it's gonna be one license per property, so it's not.
Right, it goes with the property.
So how does that work? In a subdivision?
Yeah, that's another question. Some subdivisions have.
I was gonna say, that's, some of them, they have their own covenants regarding prohibiting rental or, you know, but. Otherwise, a subdivision isn't necessarily any different unless their, unless their rules prohibit it.
Prohibit it, right.
Uh, the same way.
We are issue.
Yeah, like if you live in an apartment or a condo complex, your condo association may. May have limits or things on subleasing and, and, but that's nothing to do with us.
Right, no, understood, but if you have a subdivision owner that has not sold all of the properties. And wants to rent them all out until he sells, sells them or she sells them.
Yeah, that would be in the commercial category.
Yeah, and you'd, you'd still need a license for each.
Cause each of those are separate lots, they're separate lots.
Right.
The, the, the residence requirement, nice thing about that is it sticks to one lot, one, one, you know, one unit, one lot.
Yeah.
Matt, did you have your hand up? Yeah, I think it's up there, it's behind like.
Yeah, no, all I was gonna add was it sounds like you guys are trying to figure out like who's gonna be the. The UBO here, like the, the ultimate beneficial owner of these, these assets, these properties and I'd imagine that you guys, we will. Build a, a, a application process that will expose the UBO and for the, the committee to determine should they be commercial or should they be residential?
Yeah. That, that's helpful, yeah. I like this new guy, he's kind of cut through the, cut through the morass sometimes, isn't he?
I'm not, I just. I'm just new here, guys, sorry, I'm not, I'm just asking questions, I just like.
Yeah, it's, it's, and, and you do have a solutions oriented approach and so that's really helpful because, you know, sometimes we spend a lot of time bandying things about. And not getting where we want to get, so, um, I appreciate it for sure and, and it's al, it's always welcome. Um. So.
Yeah, I, I would like to see this settled, yeah. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah.
I'm done.
Yeah. Shelly, do you have anything on your, um, list of, of, uh, sort of deliverables, as it were, the, the requiring guidance?
Yeah. Oh, let's see, um, so we wanna let it, do we wanna, okay, yes, subdivisions. What, what about a multifamily? Do we have that many multifamily? Developments in Camden, not duplex, but multifamily, three or more buildings with three or more structures, same thing?
Yeah, that's not gonna, a multifamily is gonna not qualify for an ADU type exemption.
Well, no, right, not for, but if you wanna allow short term rentals, that, that depends on the owner or. You're not, you shouldn't sublet it out, but that's really not ours.
Yeah.
Side, but.
But those units would be in the commercial aspect, I guess, in a multifamily.
Okay, and then, and we were, and that's what we would classify them as commercial. In, in, in zoning.
Yes.
And then allow them.
Right.
However, allow them everywhere. And so like the way the ordinance, the ordinance will just be like the same thing, I'll just do, we have a short term rental. Ordinance already, so we'd have to modify that.
Well, let, yeah, let's be careful because the short term rental ordinance we have is a police ordinance.
Yeah, it's.
Registration ordinance, that has to be modified to square with this, yes, that's part of.
The zoning, right.
The zoning ordinance is gonna have to be its own thing. And, um, and, and it, Matt may not be aware, but Matt, there, you did reference that there is a, um. Or maybe it was, uh, Stephen Gold before, but there is a registration ordinance in effect. Um, our understanding is approximately ten to fifteen percent of the short term rentals in town, this is as of the meeting with Granicus. Had actually availed themselves of that procedure and the rest had not. And, um, also that the, the ordinance has zero teeth and, and totally unenforceable the way it was drafted and, and drawn up. So it really is just out there as sort of a, if you care to jump in and, and register your property, go ahead, John.
Along those lines. I do think that we should give that ten or fifteen percent. That have complied with the registration requirements. Uh, maybe a leg up in the. First year's registration.
I, I also agree with that, that.
A hundred percent.
As long, as long as we're on, on board with saying it's not for, in perpetuity, but for the first year, I would absolutely support that.
Okay. Okay. So.
And, and so I'm looking at your thing here, so Chenly, um, I just wanna make sure that, that, the, the places where you ask for information. Um, I think we like the definitions as, as drawn up here.
Okay.
Um, I think we agree that it's, uh, not just same dwelling only, but owner occupied on the same lot.
Mm-hmm.
I think we kind of agreed to that, although I still have my, I still have my, uh, proposal that be restricted to properties prior to two thousand nineteen. Um, when that came out.
Okay.
For the ADUs specifically, yes.
Right.
Um, and, and any new dwellings, like, I mean, I, I, I think anything built under the state. Registration or the state legislation, um, which is designed for available housing. Uh, not to be eligible for, uh, short term rentals. I mean, that's what the whole purpose of the legislation was to provide for more available housing. Not to provide for more income streams for property owners.
Unless.
And it still is an income stream, right? It still is an income stream if you rent it out or if you. Let your children live there or you put your elderly parents in there, you're still saving the money of, of rental, of rent. Um, so in, in a sense, it is an income stream, so you know, it, it's, it's still, you know, out there. Um.
I would wholeheartedly support that. Think that's.
Yeah.
Hey.
And then, um, so the, the, the ca, the capping on that. Uh, those is actually not necessary then, right? Because they're limited to the ones that are already in existence as of two thousand nineteen. And, yeah. And, and, um, we are not. Uh, su- suggesting a cap and we would suggest a lower fee structure for those.
Right.
I think that's a, that's a, a.
Right, that's, yeah.
Where the board is and, and the fee structure, I don't think we have to have for this presentation. Um, but I do think that we can say a significantly lower or significantly higher when we get to the commercial.
Right.
Um, and then, so then getting onto the commercial, I think the, the board's, uh, general feeling and, and I. And I think Matt is in, on board with this as well, um, that they should be capped, number to be determined. But, um, somewhere in the range of twenty five percent of what they are. I mean, if that's, if that's, that, that brings us around a hundred. Um, somewhere in that ballpark, um, you know, and, and that number. Yeah, I think it should be indicated that number can change at the discretion of the select board, I mean, or, or not, I mean. They can always change it anyway.
Okay.
Um. But that's, that's something we can talk about. How does the board feel about that, like leaving it up to the discretion of the select board? But we suggest this number.
Yes, I, I think it's good to start off lower because it can always go higher, but it, chances are it won't go lower.
Right, yeah, that would be my take on that too. And I mean, Ethan, it's gonna be up to the select board though, either way, right?
I mean, in the end, it is, but it's up to us to make our case, right? And so if, if that's a number we feel good about. Um, I think, you know, I think, you know, like, you know, Pat, I'd speak for you and me, I think we would definitely be okay with going lower. Um, John is like being, um, suppressed down to, oppressed down to a hundred and I think Crisso is pretty comfortable right at that point. I'm not sure exactly where the T is on it, but I think, I think a hundred is one that we all can sort of say, yeah, it's pretty decent. Um, and it, and it does, it, 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 it allows for these rentals to continue, but, but it, um. And then, so then from that, uh, Shelly, I think then putting them into a lottery system.
Okay.
Um, and we've talked about must show proof of ownership, you know.
Yeah, all that, yeah.
And all that, all that.
All that good stuff.
And the fee structure we're talking about would be significantly higher for a commercial enterprise.
Mm-hmm. The highest, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll just. Yeah, we got a purpose, we got authority, then we'll have definitions. Um. In it and we'll just talk about where in license is required and how they do it, transferability, the can't be transferable. Uh, how you renew it, how it's for expiration, um, and then the application process will be in the ordinance. Um.
Yeah.
And what's required, that's when all those affid. And what's required. And that's when all those affidavits and proof that you own it, proof that you have insurance. I mean, there's a million ways to do this.
Yeah, all those things will be, uh.
All the life safety stuff.
Life safety, um, do you want any notification of surrounding property owners? Or you want to just leave that? Yeah, you want that.
Yeah, I think so.
I think that's a valuable thing. It, it, it's a minimum, minimum cost and it allows them, you know, there's always going to be a hearing with the select board on the granting of each license, right? Isn't it?
With, 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 uh, what now?
Well, uh, that maybe I'm, I'm misspeaking on that. So I want to make sure I get that right. But. Would these licenses be issued by the planning department or the, the zoning under the, like, or would it be, would they be reviewed by the select board?
Me if like, if there's revenue to hire some, an outside agency or whatever.
Possibly, yeah. But I just want anyway, that, that there should be at least some possible potential for public input. Because, uh, we want to allow for. On renewals.
Right, like we could have a process, like if there's complaints, if there's a property that's received numerous complaints, it goes before the, either the plan board or select board or whatever, but there's some way.
Yeah.
That we can.
If there's, you know, trash left out on the streets, you know, instead of in a proper receptacle or taken to the proper dump or whatever.
If they're exceeding the number that they're assessed for.
Right.
Yeah, the, the, the occupancy requirements.
And then there's, um, things like tax liens and all that sort of thing that. I think the.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, like we don't want to have any outstanding fees or issues with a property. You're not going to get a license. I mean, that whole licensing thing that goes with the business. Not with the property, but with the.
Right.
Zoning goes with the property. But so by designating it. One type of it as accessory to a residential, it's like it's a residential use. It's a lower tier. Then we go up to the commercial, which is a commercial use and it can be assessed. Property assessor can be assessed as commercial as well, or at least for property, was it called private property? Uh, you know, any business that has, they get their, their, the property for the business gets taxed.
Residential business.
Port all that. So there's, I know personal property that can be done, I think, for sure.
I think it's residential business, what Chris O said.
Okay. So, um, what do we see about bedrooms?
Well, I'm not necessarily against. That discussion of a commercial assessment, but. I just, we haven't had that discussion and. I need more information before I would be.
You're talking about as far as the tax rolls are concerned, John?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's just, that's just been, been logged over the deck. We're gonna, we're gonna say that somebody is really welcome to propose that. Jeremy's just been having preliminary discussions on that. With, with the assessor's office. So that's really not in this proposal. Um, so yeah, we're not, we're not throwing that in there. Uh, but, but our, but our fee structure, yes, tied to, um, you know, again, possibly, uh, the occupancy limits, you know, so if it's. One bedroom pays less than a two-bedroom pays less or vice versa. So.
Slide and scale. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and different categories for the, um. Accessory to a residential use category, which is our first category versus a commercial use. And then we need to decide where we feel seasonal camps fit in there. Do they fall into the first? Fee structure. I think that's sort of what I would assume to make it simple, um, rather than creating a whole separate fee structure for the seasonal camp.
I would agree.
And, and a lot of those, traditionally historically, a lot of those camps are not rented through the commercial marketplace.
Right.
A lot of them are done through friends and family. So it's a.
Yeah.
Mm hmm.
Yeah. Now, um, something that we had talked about that isn't in this memo, uh, we agreed on the twenty-seven days, which would exempt you from the ordinance altogether. Um, so anybody renting month to month, essentially twenty-seven days or more is exempt from the short-term rental ordinance. Um, which gives a whole nother avenue of, of revenue and income to people who own these properties. And, and I think we all agree that. Affects the available housing stock in a way that is positive.
Okay.
Excuse me. I'm, I'll tell you, don't catch this cold that was going around. I caught it about. Uh, eleven to twelve days ago, and I'm still, still coming out the other side. And it's, I, I definitely tested negative for COVID, but man. Um, one thing that's not in this list that we did talk about was doing away with the seven-day minimum requirement. Um, because, you know, oftentimes that, that's, again, very difficult to enforce. Oftentimes it's people coming for a weekend or a long weekend, um, with the family or whatever. And, um, it may be superfluous and it didn't really accomplish the goal that it was set for because again, having something unenforceable in the ordinance. The only way you could have any kind of enforcement on it. Would be to make it part of the affidavit that I will follow all the rules. And then somebody busts them, says this car has been there for seven days and you've got the nosy neighbor or something like that. Sending in a notice to the planning board and then you yank their license or something. But that, it seems like if we could, you know, I think we talked about it. Um, there is some issue about transient, you know, you know, in the neighborhoods and that sort of thing. Um, and, you know, that's a proposal we can bring up, but I, I do want to get some conversation on that or if everybody's nodding in agreement. Um, that they're okay with that.
Mm hmm. Yeah, I'm all right.
I'll take Granicus's advice.
Yeah. I think it is, it is very hard to enforce. I think, um, though, what. I've seen a lot of the towns do, it's probably a good idea. And I know, um, Shelly and Jeremy have probably been thinking about this, but. Um, you know, sort of have a one pager list of, um, best practices. For the property owner. Um, she has to be displayed and there are various things that other towns do have to be displayed in the unit itself.
Right.
Including, you know, the registration number and all that sort of thing.
Informational packet, right.
Yeah, that's all sort of under the life safety category.
Right.
Yeah.
Urgency exit. Parking night.
Yeah. And if you get a chance to look at, um, the. Kennebec. Kenneba, Kennebunkport, um, their website.
Okay.
They have a whole informational thing about this, about how.
It's a pretty good portal.
They did, yeah, agreed. Yeah. Okay.
And that, that kind of user-friendly portal would be very helpful. Um, if we could get something like that for, for the town.
Good eye.
If you really want to see an ex, an extreme one, take a look at, uh, Palm Springs, California.
Really?
Yeah, I mean, they have, uh, they have an entire department of the city government devoted just to. Short-term rental of properties and. And licensing, uh, I mean, it's a whole process.
It's a business.
It's a huge business.
Yeah. I mean, that capping, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I was just out there over Thanksgiving and it's, um, it is, it's a really big problem.
But the city has really regu, I mean, it's. It takes six months to get a license and they come and inspect your property and make sure that you've done all these. Key things, their signs and, you know, they're, because there are ordinances about rentals versus occupancy and. Uh, it's, it's.
Yeah.
It's, it's a whole nother level, but the town, the city's website actually has some really good information for. Both the, uh, property owners and renters of what you can and can't do. So.
Well, take a look at it. And Lucia on the Kennebunkport too as well. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Cause my, my target, my target here is to, is to exit by seven. Is that, is that, are we on track here?
Yeah, goodbye. Uh, Lucia, I liked the one-page idea, um, because I think that's also very helpful. If people just have an at-a-glance thing you can look at. Okay.
Yep.
And just so everybody is aware of the rules, you know, whether it be the owner or the, um, the renter or the.
Neighbors, yeah.
Yeah. That's great.
I mean, every, every step of this process in order for it to work is education.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's on us in the next few months in, in communicating this to the community. And then it's. Once we enact it, so.
Perfect.
Yeah.
So it seems to me that. That there are, um, there are a lot of these different, um, you know, best practices, um, one-pagers. And so that might be something else. I don't know if that's something that the. The, the planning board looks into, or if that's something that Shelly and Jeremy look into or.
Yep. We can look into it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Yeah. And I'm sure, you know, just the act, the exercise of drafting brings up a million. Questions, but. But, um. We're not that far. Believe it or not.
Yeah, but I mean, I, I really appreciate all the work that you guys have done, Shelly.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, and, and the support you provided. Um, and thanks everybody else for the thoughtful input and comments and, um, work on this as well.
This is great, yeah.
Anybody else have anything before we close out?
No.
I was just, I was just had one quick question. Uh, will we, uh, you might've mentioned this before, will we get an opportunity? Uh, uh, on the internally with the planning committee to. Provide commentary back to the draft ordinance prior to it getting sent outward.
One, one hundred percent.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Multiple times.
Hopefully not too many.
No, not too many, yeah.
So I just, I just know we were planning to go in January or sooner and I just did it. That's really quick. Like it's already, you know what I mean? So I didn't know.
No, yeah, it is, it is under, yeah. Totally understand.
Do we meet in two weeks? Do we have another meeting in two weeks in December?
We, uh, we do. What's on the agenda? What are the?
I don't know if we have anything.
Uh, when's the next meeting? Uh, December twenty-first? Was that the next one?
Yeah, I think that's right.
Do you want to meet then?
Well, the question, the question had been, I think that that was possibly the nineteenth was when we might've.
And I don't think that's happening.
Select board, so.
I think that's off. But I'm not positive.
What would be a great target would be to have a, have a draft of our ordinance ready by that point in time.
By the nineteenth?
Yeah, well, by the nineteen, well, nineteenth would be great. So people could have two days to review it. Before the meeting on the twenty-first.
Okay. That would be great. Okay, draft.
What a, and.
Or sooner.
Can, can we do that?
Soon is always welcome.
Okay.
Can we do it in person? So we can get Jeannie to, to bring some rum cake?
Yeah.
I'll tell her.
Yeah. I, I.
It is the season.
It is.
Right, it's the one thing you can't do virtually.
That's all I'm saying.
That's right.
All right, we're still, we're still having the. The, uh, joint workshop. Is that off?
It's off.
Off, it's just not scheduled for, for December twenty-nineteenth.
It'll probably, it'll be in somewhere in January.
I'm pretty sure.
In January.
Not positive, but I'm pretty sure that's off. Okay.
All good?
Perfect.
All good.
Thank you.
Just one minute past the hour. Thanks, everybody for your time and attention.
Welcome, Matt.
Bye, thank you guys. I appreciate it.
Welcome.